Where are you gonna start? So, please be seated. Hello, everyone.
Hi, everyone.
Group 1, 2, 3, and 4, time is up.
So, I have seen a lot of fruitful discussion today. Everyone is putting all their thoughts into the paper. They were discussing about the shortcomings and obstacles that they are having at the moment.
So, please give us a very big round of applause for us, everyone.
So, in all the four groups, the delegates, we're going to have a question-and-answer discussion with all the participants.
Yes.
And before that, the participant is going to present them the presentation within 10 minutes.
Yep, and 5 minutes for Q&amp;A, right?
Yes.
So, will you begin?
Yeah, shall we do it from the first group?
Ms. Marcella? Maybe the first group is the first group.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. So...
We're racing with time. Time is up, guys, come on!
Time is up, ready!
Okay, so we're moving on to the first group, right? So, what group is this one? Ini grup apa? Yeah, what are you guys discussing? Social Safety Net. So, earlier today, we have listened to the presentation on the white paper on youth employment. And we have also listened to Marcella's presentation on her initial policy proposal that she's gonna advocate at the Y20 Indonesia 2022. So, after listening to Sheila's presentation earlier, we give... So, just for the context for the observers and delegates here, we give the 100 participants here the opportunity to discuss what innovation or what ideas with solutions will these young people from South Sumatra and from the Greater Sumatra will give to Marcella to strengthen her policy proposal that she will bring to Y20 Indonesia 2022. So, we have four groups from this 100 people. Two groups were discussing about youth entrepreneurship, youth social entrepreneurship, and the other two were discussing about Social Safety Net for informal and non-formal workers. So now, let's listen to the presentation from the first group. And we will have about 10 minutes to listen to their presentation. And we will have 5 minutes for the conversation with Marcella and with other observers and delegates. Can you present in English? Okay, you can present in Bahasa, and I'll help to translate if I can.
Hallo, sebelumnya selamat sore semuanya. Perkenalkan saya Usni Wiraqasuma dari kelompok 1. Jadi, topik kami pada hari ini membahas tentang Social Safety Net. Ada beberapa permasalahan yang kami angkat dari kelompok kami berupa tiga topik. Yang pertama ada tentang honorer di Indonesia. Jadi, kami dari kelompok 1 ada mengangkat beberapa topik yang ada di Sumatera Selatan khususnya. Yang pertama tentang honorer.
So, we're in the first group. We were discussing several topics. The first topic that we discussed was on honorer. Like temporary employees.
Yang permasalahan kedua tentang penerimaan prakerja.
The second topic that we discussed was the kartu prakerja, which is the pre-employment policy that was established by the Joko administration.
Dan yang ketiga tentang hak-hak para driver online, kendaraan online. Driver online.
So, then the third topic that we discussed was the rights or the benefits that informal workers like online drivers that online drivers receive.
Jadi, untuk yang honorer ini, yang diangkat itu ada tentang persamaan hak antara pekerja honorer dengan pekerja tetap.
On the temporary employee topic, we discussed the differences of benefits that temporary workers received vis-à-vis the benefits that full-time employees received.
Yang kedua ada tentang perbedaan tunjangan antara pekerja tetap dengan pekerja honorer.
Yeah, so the second one is the benefits that they received. The differences between the benefits that is received by full-time workers and temporary workers.
Untuk solusinya sendiri, kita itu ada memberikan socialization kepada para pekerja honorer tentang sebenarnya mereka itu udah dapet belum sih Social Safety Net ini.
They were trying to discuss whether temporary workers already have adequate support or benefits.
Dan untuk yang solusi kedua itu membantu mereka tentang bagaimana cara bisa mendapatkan Social Safety Nets mereka.
The second solution that they were discussing or proposing was on the measures to help them to get better Social Safety Nets.
Yang kedua itu permasalahan tentang prakerja. Jadi, di sini itu kita sering melihat bahwa adanya ketidaksesuaian target dari penerima prakerja.
The second topic that we discussed was the kartu prakerja policy. The topic that we discussed was the mismatch between what is being provided through kartu prakerja and those people who receive the benefits through kartu prakerja.
Yang kedua ada penggunaan dana prakerja yang tidak sesuai dengan tujuan.
The second issue that we discussed was the misallocation of budget through kartu prakerja.
Jadi, untuk solusinya secara keseluruhan itu, yang pertama kita ada pengen adanya terlebih dahulu edukasi tentang sebenarnya kegunaan prakerja itu apa dan target yang berhak menerimanya siapa.
The overarching solution that we proposed is to increase the awareness and understanding of people on what is kartu prakerja.
Untuk dari ketidaksesuaian dana, kita pengen adanya dari penerimanya itu membuat setting goals terlebih dahulu dari dana yang mereka dapet, terus ngelapornya dalam bentuk survei yang dilapori ke Pemerintah Pusat. Maksudnya, adanya laporan tiap bulan dari uang yang tidak dapet itu digunain untuk apa? Jadi, nggak salah target.
To address the misallocation of budget, this group proposed to sort of do survey to track how the budget is actually spent.
Yang untuk driver online atau driver object online itu, permasalahan tentang jaminan-jaminannya. Banyak yang nggak tahu atau paham tentang apa jaminan yang mereka dapet, cuman jadi mitra doang.
So, the third problem revolves around the problem of online drivers or non-standard workers whom we have discussed actually last night. The fact that they have limited awareness or information about the kind of social insurance programs that they should be a part of.
Baru yang kedua tentang pendapatan yang kurang tetap. Jadi, kebanyakan pendapatan mereka itu sebenarnya bisa dibawah standar, jadi nggak stabil.
Right, and the very fact that they are non-standard workers means that they have fluctuations in terms of the income that they receive every month.
Nah, untuk solusinya sendiri, kita pengen dari perusahaan untuk memberikan jaminan pastinya kepada mereka. Dan selain itu ada memberikan edukasi. Jadi, para mitra driver online ini nggak cuman berpegang pada satu pekerjaan, tapi ada kalian lain yang diberikan perusahaannya.
So, they're proposing that the company, in this case, provides more protection to these workers. So, not only relying on government programs, but the company itself having more initiatives to protect them. And also, you know, provide more opportunities for them to develop their skills and to find other more stable employment.
Okay, now the presentation is finished. Marcella, do you have one or two comments on what the group is discussing?
Sure, sure. First of all, thank you very much for putting your time and effort on this. I really, really appreciate it. On your first topic about temporary workers, yeah, or contract workers, that is precisely the segment that we want to target through this proposal. My point earlier that I made during the presentation is that we need to make sure that they have equal access to social insurance program, similar to their counterparts in the formal sector. So, again, ensuring that they are covered by social insurance program, both health and employment is a top priority thing. That's one of the key highlights of my policy proposal. Because, again, as I mentioned earlier, that is still the most crucial problem that we have in this country, especially for the employment part, yeah. The employment insurance, we still have low coverage on that. We're doing alright in the health sector, 86%, but for employment, we still have a lot to catch up on. And then, you made a point about how we need to we need to increase awareness of these workers of these Social Safety Nets programs. And I totally agree with you. I think that is also the main problem that is identified in the white paper. So, outreach initiatives and, you know, programs to increase their literacy and understanding of Social Safety Nets is definitely gonna be, you know, an important solution going forward. And then, on the second aspect about the pre-employment card, yeah, I think as a delegate here myself, I need to prioritize on the kinds of issues and policy proposals that I want to champion. To me, this is very much a domestic policy issue, something that maybe is not the most appropriate for us to bring into champion in global forum like Y20 or G20. The kind of solutions that you proposed are perfect if you want to talk to the Employment Ministry, for example, or the PMO, yeah, in this case. Because for this specific program, they have a specific management office who handles the management and the governance of this card. So, again, those are... I think you touch on a lot of good points about how to make the governance of the program itself more accountable. You're talking about, you know, the accuracy of targeting. You're talking about the accountability of the use of the fund itself. And in my opinion, it's more relevant for us to talk to our national government about it. Because this is something that's special to Indonesia. And the last one, your points about online drivers, again, it's quite similar to problems that we have for temporary or contract workers. Unique in Indonesia is that we acknowledge them as partners. They're not employees of the company. So, I believe that the Transportation Ministry in this case has regulated that the responsibility to cover them for to cover them with social protections falls on the worker itself. So, like the company, they don't have actually legal responsibility to cover them because technically they are not employees, yeah. They're self-employed people in this case. So, I think your point about, again, increasing their awareness of the importance of social protection is the one that we can push and prioritize. Because at the end of the day, it's their responsibility to take care of themselves, yeah, and to cover for, you know, risk of work incidents, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think that's my response. But thank you so much for your inputs, yeah, very, very valuable. Thank you.
Please give applause to Group 1. Let's move on to Group 2. Okay, Group 2, what are you guys discussing? What were you guys discussing?
Well, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Good afternoon, everyone. So, we are the team 2. So, we're gonna be talking about Social Safety Nets. And we discussed about this topic because we have a different backgrounds here and also different provinces. And we have something like the topic is for the safety, Social Safety Nets from another provinces. So firstly, Ariska will present the presentations.
Well, thank you so much for the chance. Before, we already had a discussion about bureaucracy, like information, and so on. So, this is our discussion, but we also have the conclusion from our discussion, everyone. The first is, before that, we are discussing about Social Safety Net. The first is our discussion about digitalization, and I will explain about it. And the second is about regulation our government. And we'll be present with my friends. The first is about digitalization in our country, especially in South Sumatera. The first is hard of bureaucracy in Indonesia. For example, when we want to create BPJS or even other card, it's really hard for them to get it. So, our... And the second is about the lack of information in the young people in the remote area. The third is not on the target. For example, in the prakerja program in Indonesia, not really a person or young people that who need the prakerja, but they didn't get the prakerja itself. And then, still many manual way that should not be used in this era, but still we use it. So, I think it's too old for us to use it. So, our group, especially Group 2, propose the solution, create a team through the socialization to remote area especially. Because as we know that in remote areas, still many people don't know about digitalization and then they don't know about the technology, for example, because there is... They want to think about it tomorrow also, but they don't have money to buy a phone, for example. So, our team want to government come to this remote area to do this socialization for make it them know about digitalization. It's a two solution for the hard of bureaucracy, for example. For example, like Indonesia, if in a few years, you make a banking, it should come to bank. But right now, we can make a banking in our home, for example. So, we want to Indonesia, our government of Indonesia make it in digitalization, for example, like we make in BPJS or so on. And then, educate about digitalization in remote area. Because I think if in our province, in Palembang especially, all people already know about digitalization, but not in this remote area, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. And then, the second is ask the government to increase the facilitas... The facilities about digitalization. Because if there is no facilities, it's not make it happen. Thank you. And the second, things will be presented by Dinda.
Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Dinda Amadoutami, and I would like to tell you about the regulation that being a problem of Indonesian. The first one is non-standard of right graduation of prakerja. It's mean like we don't have a standard of procedural to graduate the prakerja. I mean like when somebody registration as a member of prakerja, we don't know the transferation of who will be the... Siapa yang bakal lulus dan siapa yang bakal nggak lulus. And the second one is the fee under the UMR, and we don't have a sanction of the company. So, there are so many company that give the fee under the UMR of the member. And the third is the honorer didn't get the assurance. So, we have a solution. The first one is we need to do periodic audience to connect the youth worker and government. And the second one is the government need to mentoring the company performance to know the how company is progress or the activity of that company. And the third one is we need to give the assurance to honorer because we already know that so many honorer so many honorer didn't get the assurance if they are sick, die, or something like that. I think that's all for our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, give a round of applause for Group 2. Now, Marcella, if you have, you know, a brief comment for Group 2, and then after that, let's move on to another delegate to give comments to the presentation from Group 2.
Alright, thank you very much, guys, for your time and effort, yeah. My first comment on digitalization, yes, that's important. But I think we also need to pay attention to the readiness of the constituents or the stakeholders itself. So, I believe for digitalization, we need to do it gradually in order to make sure that it can transition smoothly because, you know, not a lot of people can adapt to it right away. And then, second, on prakerja, I think I've made a comment on that before. And then, on temporary or contract workers, again, similar comments before. But I think there was one point that I want to highlight is that for temporary or contract workers, actually, the government through in press, instructive president or president instruction has instructed 30 or something line ministries Indonesia to optimize the coverage of social health and employment insurance for all workers Indonesia, including and especially, actually, honorer workers, yeah, temporary or contract workers. So, what you're suggesting here, the government is actually already acting on it. So, that's good news. So, I think that's all, my comment.
Right, excellent, Marcella, thank you. Now, we still have a couple of minutes for this group. So, why don't we go to the Indonesian delegates? Does any of you wanna give some comments? Marcel, you look ready, so let's go to you.
Thank you, Group 2. So, just to introduce myself, my name is Marcel. I'm the Digital Transformation Delegate. So, next month, we'll be discussing this in a lot more detail. So, I think, you know, on your points on digitalization, that's definitely very important. One thing that I actually still want to ask back to you guys is what's the most effective way for socialization for digitalization, right? I think you're on the ground, you're here. As much as we wanna form policies from central governments or from companies, you know, we're all trying to find the same solution. We all wanna do socialization. But what's the most effective way? How can we reach those people? One thing that I wanna sort of discuss in next month's Digital Transformation Summit also is the fact that although technology and digital means are a great way to scale access, there is still a need for an offline mentor or sort of an offline presence for that transition to the online and digital world. So, my question to you guys will be, what's the best way that we can facilitate that? Should the local governments take charge? Should it be a central government initiative? And if it's central government, should it be line ministries? Or, you know, how can companies also work together with governments to reach that network of people? So, that's one thing that I wanna hear your ideas from because that's very valuable, and I completely agree. Socialization is important. Information access is important. Because if we all move to the digital world today, which we've been forced to do, right, over the past two years during the pandemic, we must make sure that no one's left behind, right? We can't just tell all government functions, "Let's just go digital." Because digital is great, we all agree. As youth, we agree, digital is great. But banyak orang masih ketinggalan kan? There's a lot of people yang bisa ketinggalan. And that's the concern. So, we have to prevent that. So, what is the best way to socialize and ensure, you know, wider digital adoption?
Thank you, Marcel, excellent question. So, the question for this group is, what is the best way to do socialization, especially to people at the grassroots level? So, anyone wants to take the question? Okay, they're discussing. Everyone should answer, absolutely.
Okay, thank you for the question. I tried to answer the question. I think, we think the government should work together with the local government or even the young people, for example, because so many people or young people come to Palembang to get the education. It's mean they have the information, they have the skill, or even the information like they can share to the people in the remote area, for example. And then, actually, the most problem is the mindset from that people in remote area. So, the first thing that government should do is change their mindset first. It's not possible be real if the mindset still in the manual way or they didn't want to change their mindset. So, the first thing should change their mindset, and then, we should work together with the local government. Because the person that can reach or the person that near them is their local government, right? So, the first thing that we should do is with a local government itself, I think, and we think. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Give a round of applause to Group 2. Let's move on to Group 3. Where is Group 3? Group 3 is right there. Right, before we start the presentation of Group 3, I'd like to remind the delegates and observers to pay attention just in case you guys wanna ask questions or give comments to this presentation. Right, so, please start.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, social and youth entrepreneurship highly... Ladies and gentlemen, social and youth entrepreneurship highly become fail. And that's become our main problem. To solve the problem, we looking for a new application that will be delivered by our representative. To Mr. Ilham, time is yours.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Ilham. As the representative of my fellow participants from Group Three, will represent you, uh, our discussions regarding to the youth and social entrepreneurship. Well, the first one, we have already collecting some challenges that maybe that we face as the youth, uh, that are going to do the social entrepreneurship in the future. The first one, it's like what we have already know, that we, we have, we have kind of like vocational educations. The second one is the social stigma. Just like what usually happen in the middle of our society when some group of people are doing, uh, a productive activities, uh, the other groups will be jealous. This what we call as a social jealousy. The second one is the paradoxical trend. And as like what we have already know that, um, in some certain periodic, uh, in certain time, in our society, we have some trend. And, uh, the, the entrepreneurship activity somehow following the trend itself. Just like, um, the trend of Escapal Milo, Seblah, and so on and so stuff. And many of these, um, activity cannot survive and be sustained till the end of the day. Um, the sec, uh, the fourth one is the youth preference. Like we have seen that nowadays, the youth have the preference to choose the jobs which have, uh, which, um, ensure the decent of the jobs for their career futures and the green jobs that they are really concerned to the global warming. Um, the next one is regarding to the funding or capital. Because this is also related to the next point, which is lack of information and literacy regarding to the, regarding to the, um, uh, social youth entrepreneurship. Now, we would like to address this kind of challenges that we have already collected here. With the second point is global social and youth entrepreneurship platform, which, uh, we assume that this platform will be the source of information uh, and can collect, uh, can, uh, can allow the, the youth entrepreneur actors to find the invitation. And the second one is, uh, sorry, the third one is the training for the social entrepreneurs. And, uh, the next one is regarding to the subsidy, the subsidy from the government. And now we got the conclusion that, uh, and we, we really want to propose this, um, uh, uh, solutions by making the social youth entrepreneur applications for, in, uh, amongst the G20 memberships. These applications may allow, um, to, to share the information across the borders. And also the social youth entrepreneurs actors can find the investor in one platform to propose their proposal. And, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Group Three. Alright, Marshila, why don't you give your short remarks on this group?
Sure, thank you very much for your input. Very valuable. Um, again, the main problems that you have identified here, you know, lack of funding, lack of training, nonexistent incentives for the creation of social enterprise. Those are accurate. And again, these are the problems that I hope to tackle by the proposal, the proposal that I made earlier about a solid, robust regulatory, regulatory framework that supports and also rewards the creation of social enterprise. Again, the government actually has recently issued a regulation, a presidential regulation, number two, year 2022, if I'm not mistaken, uh, which, um, strive to create that, that, that ecosystem, that conducive environment for entrepreneurship in Indonesia. But it, it is not, um, you know, it's not focused on youth social entrepreneurship per se. But I think it's a great start for our country to have that kind of framework to begin with. And, um, your solution or your proposal about this application is a great complementary, uh, I think, to the proposal that I made earlier about making some sort of hub, a youth social entrepreneurship hub among G20 countries. Again, to democratize, widen access to resources that are needed to create social enterprise. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Marshila. Now, let's listen to some short comments from our delegate from India, Avantika.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, first of all, all these focus group discussion which were held, they were quite an eye-opening thing because of the youth which is involved in all this thing. They are the future. So, uh, in this, the third focus group discussion, they discussed regarding this youth social enterprises. And the solution which they gave in the form of application, it's quite relevant. Uh, not only in Indonesia, especially for all the developing nations, developing countries. So these kind of application, they'll bridge the gap which is there currently and between the government and the other NGOs, civil society organizations. So in that sense, it's quite, it's quite a practical solution, what I felt about this thing. So I just want to say that it was quite a good discussion among you and all the best.
Thank you, Avantika. Next, I'd like to call on Nashin to provide comments.
Thank you so much, um, to all of the groups for really great insights. And, um, specifically, I just wanted to bridge a few of these points that were already brought up. I think this, uh, the point that you brought up about regional exchange, exchange of knowledge between youth among countries is extremely relevant. Um, the use of an application is a really great idea. One thing I would, I would like to propose to maybe, we can think of this one step further, is could we think that as we are, as you mentioned, trying to address the social challenges, uh, challenges about the environment, you know, entrepreneurship on green, um, the green economy, can we move, can we take the, this sort of sharing application to the next step by, um, creating things that are open source? That way, whenever, anyone, whenever anyone has a solution, we can build off of each other through different countries. Of course, the implementation is going to be specific to each location, but there are commonalities because the, the challenges are global. And if we can, um, combine these sorts of solutions like platforms where we can share knowledge and take it to open source, I think that expands the possibilities even more. So I just wanted to offer that, um, just as an expansion to, it's a really great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Nashin. Thank you so much. Right, so before we move on to the last group, which is Group Four, I'd like to invite Dinesh, the delegate from Singapore, to provide some comments.
Hi, Ryan. First and foremost, congratulations and kudos to you all for stepping up and coming forward. I know it's a weekend, you could have, you know, stayed home, be comfortable. Um, what social enterprise means and what youth tackling this means is not just within Indonesia or specific countries. As what Shila mentioned, what the work you do here could impact people across the world. For example, whatever happens in Ukraine, how can what we are doing here as an application or the social enterprise we run help them across? So I think we should try and broaden what we do and how we can think further than just looking into individual countries. Thanks.
Thank you, Dinesh. Now, let's move on to the last group, Group Four.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Rizki Janwado from Fourth Group. Today, we have the opportunity to discuss, discussing about what the world faced today, especially during the pandemic of COVID-19. Now, our group have the opportunity to discussing about the issue of youth social entrepreneurship. Well, for the challenge, it will explained by the gorgeous ladies, Fataya. So please, Fataya, take your mic.
Uh, thanks for the opportunity. Um, I'm gonna present about the challenge. Uh, our challenge is, uh, this is our challenge. For the first, lack of access to information on opportunities and business development skill. Um, for the exam, for the example is we have, uh, funding, like a kur, kartu prakkerja, kriya Sriwijaya. Uh, but ini udah ada tapi belum merata. Nah, that's why, uh, we provide the solution to through equal education system. For the second, lack of real implementation, entrepreneurship curriculum education. Sama seperti yang pertama, kita tuh udah ada tapi belum merata juga. Dan for the last is for in financial management. Uh, for the example, on behalf of a company of business for their own benefit. Jadi ini kayak kita tuh mengatasnamakan bisnis orang lain untuk diri kita sendiri demi keuntungan kita sendiri. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is probably I will explain to you guys about the solutions itself and also the opportunity through the solution. The first one is we already know Indonesia have credit usaha rakyat or kur. So, but the obligation is not, uh, not too comprehensive. That's why we need to adding the obligation for the applicants for giving the social impact. This is actually, um, inspired by so many level in so many countries, such as the low-profit limited liability company in the US and also the community interest company in the UK. The, the regulation here is the, where they encourage a company or corporate to use their corporate social responsibility funding to funds so many people to building their own job or their own business. So that's why we need to have the obligation on that. And the second one is we wants to have the solution on the primary level first, which is the village. And the village, we want to the local government to develop innovative competition in the village level to optimize the potential such as the potential of the villages. Some maybe fruit, maybe their land, maybe there so many things that they, they can explore. And then, we also wants to have the education center or training center to have the consulting, mentoring and evaluating. Uh, this is consists on how they could have the information access to funding and the opportunity. And also the third, the fourth is the collaboration between government, educational institution, also local company through the CSR program also. And that's why these solutions could be the opportunity, especially on the scale-based education. This, uh, the second was the bonus demographic that we need to achieve in 2045. And this is also provide employment prospect through new job opportunities for the youth and also increase competition and also innovations. And the last one, young people has a role model. Uh, not only their, their self is become the role model to the other person. So that's why we also building this such a very competitive resources of human. So that's why I think our discuss, our discussion program, uh, that discussing about that. So yes, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Now, Marshila, do you want to provide comments?
Yes, thank you very much. Can I just say, your proposed solutions are excellent. Um, the first one on Korea, uh, micro credits or micro loans. So you're suggesting that we should add some sort of eligibility criteria for the potential recipients of kur, you know, to, um, to have, to have, to have social impact on their business model in order to be able to have access to this kur. I think that's an excellent solution and I, um, I really agree with that. On the second, uh, point about, um, I think you're highlighting about the role of villages, yeah? Uh, role of, of community to sort of encourage entrepreneurship among youth. Again, also very relevant, very important. And this relates to my proposal about, um, you know, strengthening, uh, community-based, uh, training centers. And, um, within this idea, actually, one of the points that I want to stress is that these community-based, uh, training programs or centers should, um, emphasize not only on, you know, hard skills that are needed in a current labor market, but also soft skills and entrepreneurial skills in order to widen, you know, employment opportunities for young people, um, after the training, right? So if they have, you know, aspiration to become youth, uh, social entrepreneur, then they will have the proper trainings or preparations for that. And then, um, collaboration between education institution, companies, yeah? Again, this is also relevant and, and, and related to my proposal about, um, giving opportunities and access, especially for disadvantaged youth. Um, you know, opportunities to rescale and upskill themselves, including in, uh, you know, entrepreneurial related skills through triple helix partnerships. So excellent. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Marshila. So I'd like to provide the opportunity for other Indonesian delegates or international delegates and observers. If you guys want to ask questions or if you guys want to provide comments for the presentation, you can raise your hand. Otherwise, I'd like to call on Farah to provide her comments.
Test, test, okay. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm Farah Olivia. Okay, Group Four, thank you for your, um, great input. Um, uh, I agree with what, uh, your group has shared to us. But I will focus on the first challenge. I, I won't ask, but I will like deliver. I will like give some, some input from my experience since I'm working with the indigenous group and also, uh, working with the youth entrepreneur, youth entrepreneur in rural area. So, um, there is one biggest challenge there that, uh, some of youth has a limited access to the stakeholders or maybe to the programs or to any idea of things. So what we, what we do to help them to get the access that, uh, we, we believe that, uh, every, every group, every, um, every region in Indonesia has a specific, specific characteristic. So I think it's important to do some contextual approach man. In, in the case of the western, eastern part of Indonesia, um, what we do is we, we do some contextual approach man by, by, by engage with the local communities, with the traditional council and also the original cons, uh, religion council. So I think, uh, that's what I want to share. So if you, uh, if it's relevant to the people in Sumatera or maybe, uh, group or youth in the western part of Indonesia, maybe you can use that approach man. But in the eastern part of Indonesia, normally, because the group of people there, we really have a deep chemistry with, with the religion and also with the traditional council. So if the stakeholders sometimes come to our place and they want to like deliver the program or deliver their policy or deliver their intervention, it's better to reach to this kind of group. Okay, I think it's, it's all from me. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Farah, for your comments for this, uh, group. Now, uh, why don't we listen to Mbah Alia, who is the special staff to the Minister of Youth and Sports, on her thoughts on the four presentations that were delivered by the four groups?
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, it was my pleasure today to get an insight from the local youth regarding youth employment, especially about entrepreneurship and the social especially about entrepreneurship and the social safety net. Um, so today we discussed various, um, topics, um, such as the kartu kerja and how, um, the different types of employments get their benefits. And, uh, however, uh, the freelancers, like the object drivers and stuff, they still have difficulties attaining proper insurance, um, and also, uh, and insurance pensions and other stuff like that. Um, and also pendapatan gaji or, uh, yang di bawah minimum atau UMR in companies or even in the government, um, it's not the same. Like, there is a minimum standard, but still not every company wants to follow that, uh, minimum standard. Um, and it's, and then, tidak semua karyawan yang bekerja di perusahaan swasta mendapatkan gaji yang UMR. Dan juga tidak hanya itu, gawai honorer yang di pemerintah juga tidak mendapatkan jaminan atau protection. Uh, so then it creates a difficulty because it is like an honor to work for a government or for a great company. However, if not properly compensated, uh, then it creates, uh, just a difficulty for you to, um, live your life. And so going digital is great and necessary to keep up in this ever-evolving world. However, also bear in mind the different situations of each region, especially a country like Indonesia that's so diverse, however, is not equally developed. So going digital must adapt depending on the situation, cultural, religion, and other aspects of each region. Dissemination and socialization, that's also something that we was talked about earlier, of various safety nets and the importance of the safety nets is needed from a top-down and bottom-up, uh, method, not just either one. Because there are, um, there are different, uh, each culture responds to the government differently. So it cannot just be from the central government that says, oh, you have to do A, B, C. It, it has to be a collaborative effort from the local provincial to the lowest level of government and even to the education sectors that has to work together for any type of dissemination and socialization. And I feel like bureaucracy has always been a difficult hurdle in Indonesia. It really is one of the biggest challenges. I myself have experienced the difficulties, the challenges that, um, bureaucracy gets in the way of, uh, my daily task and of creating programs and of serving the youth. Um, there's a lot of issues with that. And I think our current president is, um, memangkas, sedang berusaha untuk memangkas banyak proses birokrasi so that it's much more simpler and things get done more, much more quicker. And one of the, uh, solutions to that is to have more young people working in the government in the local and national, uh, level. Because usually, young people are more accessible, um, than compared to the older generations. So then it will, uh, just speed up the communication process faster. And, uh, that, and it will increase transparency as well. So you need more, uh, young people working in the, both in the executive and the legislative sector. And also the importance of vocational training, especially soft skills and not just hard skills to compete in this world. So as, um, perwakilan kementrian or representative of the ministry, it will be our job to ensure that all of these topics of discussion gets to be discussed in the summit later in July and, uh, hopefully can become, uh, program for our gov, our government. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alia. Right. Now, uh, since we have listened to all of the presentations and we have listened to a lot of comments from our participants, uh, I'd like to invite, uh, Marchila as the delegate of Indonesia for the youth employment to come to the stage, because we still have about like twenty minutes. So we'll try to dig deeper on, uh, what Marchila is trying to do in the next, uh, months to come. Right. Marchila, first question from me, right? What was the most powerful or important insight that you get from this experience of discussing with young people, especially in Palembang?
So again, thank you very much, everybody to, you know, for making a time and effort to do this. I think, you know, one of the most important highlights that I've found was that actually the problems that I identified, um, are echoed by most of you. So this actually gives me assurance and more confidence that, you know, the, the work that I've done, uh, in the, in the past weeks and months are, um, are accurate, right? Because it's gonna be a problem if I identify, uh, the wrong or, uh, you know, inaccurate problems that actually are faced by, uh, youth in reality. So I think it's good to know that, um, you guys are echoing and, and, uh, you know, we have some commonalities on ideas that are most, uh, relevant and most pressure, on the most pressing issues that need to be addressed today. And then second, I think I also really appreciate, um, the fact that, you know, I can see the local nuances, nuances of the problems that we have. Because obviously, maybe me coming from, you know, uh, I currently work in government, um, at the central government. So sometimes, you know, I forget about the local variations, uh, the varieties of problems that, uh, different people from different region, uh, face. So, you know, hearing from local youth today, I think it's, uh, it's eye-opening because, you know, some of you, um, highlighted some points that are quite unique to, to this region. Uh, so again, really appreciate that. And then, last but not least, um, I really appreciate the, you know, the inclusive process that we have gone through within, uh, today and actually in the past few weeks and months. Because we as delegates, we try to, uh, listen to and accommodate, um, as much as possible, you know, the voices of young people who we seek to represent, right? In this, in this youth summit. So, um, I myself and the rest of the delegates, uh, Indonesia, uh, we look forward to opening, uh, to opening ourselves to you, you know, so having more discussions. If you're keen to, uh, discuss more on the issues that you believe are most important to you, uh, we're really open and, uh, you know, we're, uh, we're really receptive of your ideas going forward.
Right. Thank you, Marchila. Maybe just a little bit of context, right, for the local participants here. Um, what will you do as a delegate at the Y20 and what will be the ultimate outcome? So why are you doing all these things, consultation with young people? How will that fit into your, you know, your effort as a delegate?
Again, as an Indonesian delegate, we seek to represent the voice and concerns of Indonesian youth, right? So we're not gonna be able to do that job properly if we don't listen to the people who we represent in the first place. So, um, you know, this is the kind of, um, you know, process and activities that is ideal for us to, to gain that inputs, to, to hear that voices, to, uh, you know, to listen to your concerns so that we can actually make inform, um, you know, uh, decisions on, um, what kind of policy that we want to put forward, um, in the summit itself. So, yeah, this is, actually, this is like the heart of what we're doing, right? Or we need to, uh, make sure that we facilitate, we accommodate your concerns and champion that at the global level.
Right. Now, uh, I know that you have presented your policy proposal to, uh, the local participants here, but some of us haven't actually heard of what will you bring to the Y20 summit as your policy proposal. Can you remind us just in like, uh, short, you know, sentences, what will you bring to Y20 Indonesia 2022?
Yeah, so just as a background, you know, we are aware that youth are vulnerable to unemployment and precarious work, um, especially in informal and non-standard forms of employment. So, you know, I believe that youth need pathway to decent and stable jobs, right? And that's, that's the main goal of, uh, the policy that I'm trying to propose in this context. And to reach that goal, um, you know, there are three main strategies that I've identified and I call it the three Ps, the tiga P. So the first one is to prevent. Um, that is to prevent young workers who are first-time job seekers and are transitioning from school to, uh, to the world of work. Uh, prevent them from falling into low-quality jobs in the first place, right? Preventing them from getting into informal, informal and non-standard forms of employment in the first place. The second P is protect. So how we can protect those young workers who are already in informal or non-standard forms of employment so as to prevent them from falling further into poverty and social exclusion? And then the third piece is, the third P is promote. So how do we empower them, uh, how do we facilitate young workers, um, so that they can access better jobs, right? So it's, um, it's an end-to-end intervention, um, that I believe are needed by youth in order to, um, you know, to have, um, you know, better protection and, and, uh, better support to access better jobs. I think in, in general, that's, that's the idea.
Right. That's a very important thing that you will bring to Y20 Indonesia. Now, uh, for the session, we will still, we still have about like fifteen minutes to spend. So why don't we open the floor for questions from local participants or from, uh, delegates and observers? If you have any questions, uh, to Marchila, especially on what will she bring to Y20 Indonesia and what will she do in the next coming months? So any local participants who want to ask questions or provide comments to, um, Marchila's efforts to, in, 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 in gathering the voices of young people in Indonesia? Come on, don't be shy. I see someone actually taking off his mask. Do you wanna, do you wanna ask questions? Yeah, all eyes on you, bro. No? You don't wanna ask questions? Yeah, it's you. Yeah. Do you wanna ask questions? Yeah, yeah.
Eh, pakai bahasa Indonesia, nggak apa-apa ya? Oke.
Oke.
Oke. Eh, pertanyaannya sebenarnya tadi Mbah siapa tadi Marcella ya? Mbah Marcela tadi selalu menjelaskan kita harus memberikan, eh, perhatian dan lain-lain untuk meningkatkan kualitas kerja nanti untuk masyarakat Indonesia. Betul kan? Tapi, eh, kemudian di lain sisi, di social entrepreneurship, eh, standar yang diberikan oleh, apa sih salahnya tuh? Eh, pekerjaan yang digunakan oleh social entrepreneurship itu rata-rata tidak menurui standar dan kemudian di bawah, eh, non-formal, pekerjaan tidak tetap lah jatuhnya kan? Pekerjaan tidak tetap, tidak ada jaminan, kemudian, eh, kita juga micro dari WMKM sendiri, micro orang-orang yang, merekapun tidak akan dapat jaminan itu karena keterbatasan biaya, begitu kan? Akan tetapi, Mbah Marcela tadi selalu menjelaskan kalau pemuda itu harus menghindari, bahkan mencegah pemuda untuk bekerja di sektor tidak tetap kayak gitu. Terus, bagaimana dong solusinya untuk social entrepreneurship yang mau memulai usaha, yang mau apa sih namanya? Hidupannya itu lebih layak lah ya, hidupan lebih layak. Kemudian tidak takut itu terhadap pencegahan orang-orang yang mau bekerja di sektor tidak tetap seperti itu. Terima kasih.
Marchila, did you get the questions? Oke.
Uh, thank you very much. I think that's a very important question and one that I did not think about. So, thank you very much. Um, so you were saying that, um, you know, on the one hand, we're saying that we need to protect workers in informal and non-standard forms of employment. But on the other, we're also, um, trying to promote or champion youth social entrepreneurship. In, in which case, you know, if someone is trying to, uh, build a social enterprise, there, it's more likely than not that they're gonna hire people who are gonna be non-standard workers, right? I think that's what you're saying, because these workers will not have, you know, decent or appropriate, um, uh, protection. So I think in that case, you know, first of all, um, we, okay. So now we see them as non-standard form, uh, as non-standard workers. What I'm proposing is that we need to ensure that they are covered by, uh, social insurance, right? Social health and employment insurance. So, um, in this case, you know, the, the role of, of the entrepreneur itself becomes important in order to make sure that their, their, their workers are covered. So again, this is the point about, um, improving outreach initiatives and literacy, um, about, uh, increasing, um, workers' awareness of social safety, of social safety nets programs. And then also another point that I highlighted in my proposal is that, um, you know, I propose for the offering of what I call is job insecurity benefits, which is some sort of expansion of unemployment benefits. You guys know that in Indonesia, we recently have jaminan kehilangan pekerjaan or unemployment benefits. This can only be claimed if you are unemployed, if you become unemployed and you have to, um, you know, you have to, um, pay your premium for a certain number of months before you, uh, are able to claim such benefit. What I'm proposing is that, what if we think broader than that? What if we also give benefits to those people who they are still employed, but in informal settings or in non-standard form, non-standard settings, right? In that case, eh, in that context, you know, if we offer this job insecurity benefits, they can also access, um, both income support and employment support. Income support, for example, in the form of cash transfers. If, you know, suddenly because of external shocks like pandemics, they lose their jobs or, um, their work hours is reduced significantly or their earnings is reduced significantly, they can, you know, have access to that income support in the form of direct like cash transfer that, that serves as a protection floor for them, right? But also the, uh, another important component is the employment support aspect. How, um, as part of this job insecurity benefit, uh, the government also provide, um, you know, training services and, um, uh, you know, um, job search assistance or placements program so that they can, um, you know, they can have access to, um, other jobs that are better for them, right? Um, and this is especially important when you talk about, um, you know, non-standard workers and, uh, who work in, in, uh, social enterprises. So I think that's my question, that's my answer for your question. I hope that answers. Again, my point is that all these policy ideas need to work together to intervene at different level, right? To, to, to combat the problem from different angles so that, uh, every problem that, that, uh, we face can have solutions.
I really agree with you, uh, Marchila, to, so to attack the problem from different angles and having different solutions, uh, for this problem. So I'm gonna open the floor for another round of question. Does anyone, okay, I see, uh, someone raising his hand. Okay.
Okay. First of all, I would like to say, thank you so much for this opportunity to allowing me to attending this amazing event, this platform of Y20 Submit 2022. Well, my question is, can we ever overcome an inequality, especially for the youth employment in Indonesia and over the countries in G20? Thank you.
Marchila, did you get the question or do you want them to repeat?
One more?
Please repeat, yeah.
Okay. Can we ever overcome an inequality, especially for the youth employment in Indonesia and over the countries in G20?
Okay, thank you for your question. I think, hmm, I, I mentioned earlier about, um, intervening at the very, at the very beginning, right? How we need to prevent young workers who are first-time job seekers, who are transitioning from school to the world of work. Um, uh, we need to make sure that they have access to, you know, the right skilling, uh, development, uh, the right skill development initiative so that they don't fall into precarious work. So I believe that in order to, um, address that inequality, we need to make sure that they have the same sort of opportunities to begin with, right? Um, they have access to the same quality, uh, training and skill development to begin with, right? Uh, that's why, uh, one of the sub, sub, uh, proposal or sub-policy that I proposed, um, is the importance of community-based, uh, training and vocational education. Because these are, you know, the sort of decentralized, um, solutions that I, I hope, you know, can reach disadvantaged youth better, right? Because not, uh, everybody can go to school, uh, for twelve years, for example, in Indonesia. So if we have, you know, solutions that are closer to, to where they are, um, it will be, it will be a great, uh, you know, complement to the sort of formal, um, and main ways, uh, people get education from formal schooling. So again, um, you know, grassroots solutions, community-based solutions are needed to, um, you know, to complement the main solutions that are provided by the government.
Right. Thank you, Marchila. Is there anyone else who want to ask question to Marchila? Oh, someone. Okay. And please give us your name as well.
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michael. I am, uh, from the United States. I live in Jakarta. Thank you for allowing me to attend. And, um, here's my question. Thank you for allowing me to attend. And here's my question. So in some countries like around the world, and I'm thinking specifically in America, there are some different like initiatives to encourage people to apply to like high-demand sectors or positions with the promise of like benefits and social safety nets. So, Marchila, my question is, from like the Indonesian government's perspective, what are like the most valuable sectors that young people can think about entering into in Indonesia?
You know, I think in principle, it has to go back to where the country is heading. I mean, what kind of vision the country has for itself? What kind of economy it wants to become, right? What kind of strength that they want to exploit? What kind of comparative advantage that they want to exploit? They want to exploit in order to become a big country. I think we need to identify those sectors first, right? So that afterwards, we can focus on preparing our human resources, our quality human resources to support those sectors. For example, I think tourism and creative economy are big in Indonesia right now. So then we need to provide scaling for people that are supportive for the development of those sectors. Yeah, so I think it comes back to the vision that the country has for itself, what kind of economy it wants to become and therefore what kind of sector it wants to focus on.
Right. Is there anyone else who wants to ask question to Marchila? Otherwise, I'm gonna steal the last minutes to ask the question. No one? Okay. Marchila, last question for you in this session, right? So I know that you've been doing a lot of bilateral meetings and a lot of catch-ups with other delegates. In your track, right, in youth employment, what other issues that you foresee will emerge during the discussion in the next few months? And how would you strategize in your negotiation?
You know, I think although we have spoken a lot about scaling, we know that it's actually not one of the priority issues for youth employment track this year. We have two, as we know, which are social safety nets and youth social entrepreneurship. But scaling keeps coming, you know, as an important issue that we need to deal with. So I believe it will, you know, it will become a highlight as well for this year because, you know, based on the discussions or preliminary discussions that I have with other delegates, they also, you know, identify the same problem and skill gaps and the need to cover that. And then other important aspect is also, I believe, inclusivity. You know, for example, delegates from Mexico and Argentina have mentioned a few times about the importance of including women and people with disabilities in these initiatives. How we can ensure equitable access to quality scaling and education and employment opportunities for them. So I think it will be a highlight as well and is highly relevant to our other track, which is diversity and inclusion. Another point is the importance of digital literacy or digital skills, you know, in order to dissipate to the current labor demand and our transition to digital economy and green economy. So again, for this aspect, it will have a lot of crossover with the digital transformation track. I think those are some of the issues that I have identified so far.
Like some of the issues are things that were discussed as well in the previous cycles. And, you know, these things are, you know, our issues, the issues of young people, right? Now, local participants, delegates, and observers, Marchila will be the delegate of Indonesia for youth employment. And in the coming months, she will be doing a lot more of FGDs and discussions with local youth representatives and local leaders. So please reach out to her if you have anything that you wanna, that you want her to advocate at the Y20 Indonesia. And you can always reach her out while she is here during this event. So I'd like to thank the organizer for giving us the opportunity to actually deep dive into what Marchila is gonna be advocating in the next few months. So I will leave back the floor to the emcee.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Marchila, and also Angelo.
So what do you think, Hannah?
Wow, it was a very fruitful discussion and all the participants are sharing their ideas, their shortcomings. And this event is actually a very good opportunity for them to actually share what actually they're having in their mind, what they're having every day, all the troubles that they're confused where to share. And this platform is a place where they can finally voice out their ideas.
Yeah, and I hope that Town Hall President, ideas, sharing the ideas maybe can be heard and to be in Y20 itself. Thank you very much, Marchila.
And before we are going to have the dinner, we are having the coffee break first. And for the delegates, you may have the coffee break and also the early dinner right here. And after that, you can go back to your room for the talk show.
And for the Town Hall President, you can have a coffee break too and stay here to watch the summit, yeah, the talk show.
Yeah.
So enjoy your dinner. Thank you very much.